Mr. McCosker.
All right. And we have a-
Chair, you have a forum?
Thank you very much. Before, we will be moving into closed session. Mr. Hirons, can you read us into closed session?
I'll play a fairly quick closed session, by the way. Let's see, move to pursuant to Section 2.23711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss appointments of personnel pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in closed session. We should have a fairly short closed session, but we will be back in a few minutes. Thank you.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you poll the board, please?
Mr. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Kater?
Agreed.
Ms. Egan?
Agreed.
Ms. Hazard?
Agree.
Ms. Healy?
Agree.
Mr. Hirons?
Agreed.
Mr. McCosker?
Abstain.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
All right, do we have any motions coming out of closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint the principal at North Stafford High School.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Benson, can you please make our announcement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to announce Mr. Dan Horneck as the new principal at North Stafford High School.
Please stand.
Mr. Horneck started his career in teaching in 2005 as a world history teacher at Stafford High. In 2010-11, he served as principal intern at North Stafford High School and became assistant principal at North Stafford High School in 2011. He has served on various committees such as the Literacy Initiative Planning, All Century Learners, and SHHS Improvement Team. He's also initiated activities such as Challenge Day, staff book studies, and activities recognizing student academic success. In addition, he has presented at multiple professional development programs on such topics as AMO Accountability Progress, Classroom Management, Student Engagement, Skillful Teacher, Concepts in Action, Student Progress Goal Setting, and Smart Goals. Mr. Horneck was recipient of Teacher of the Year Award while at Stafford High School, served as Social Department's Department Chair, and was selected to the 10th edition of Who's Who Among America's Teachers. Congratulations, Mr. Horneck.
And we know, Mr. Horneck, as you know, this is effective tomorrow. Thank you. So welcome, not really welcome aboard, but congratulations. Moving on, do we have any further motions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Hirons?
I would move to accept this superintendent's recommendation for the appointments within the Office of Learning and Organizational Development.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson, would you continue our great announcements?
First of all, it's my pleasure to announce Dr. Karen Duffy as our new instructional and professional learning design lead. Dr. Duffy, I get you to stand up, please. This is a new position as a result of reorganization within what was the Office of Instruction to the Office of Learning and Organizational Development. I'm sure many of you know that Dr. Duffy's had a huge impact on our thinking about design in terms of spaces. We're looking forward to that extending into instructional design as well, so congratulations. And it's my pleasure to announce Ms. Dinah Robinson as our new CTE and Workforce Preparedness So we intend to prepare students to enter the workforce, further education, be good citizens, and this is an important part of what we do to prepare kids to be successful. And I have to say that Stafford County Public Schools really distinguishes itself in terms of students that are pursuing that certification as a part of our current technical education offerings. I think it's really great that we've elevated this to a high level within the Office of Learning and Organizational Development. And then finally, it's my pleasure to announce Wendy Martin Johnson as our new Executive Director for Student Services. So as a school system, we really do an incredible job of meeting the needs of all students within our school division, and the folks in Student Services have a lot to do with that, and I'm very excited that it looks like we're on a path to continue some really incredible work, and I'm very excited that we're able to afford a little bit of overlap here so that we have a smooth handoff. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Well, what a great-
We didn't vote on the-
You didn't vote on 3.01 or 3.02. You never did a vote. They would say that you move it, you second it, and then Dr. Benson starts speaking, nobody would-
They moved to approve the recommendations.
But nobody voted after that.
I thought we did, too.
I thought we did, too.
All right. All right.
I abstained on the closed session because I was a couple of minutes late, and I can't verify by law that, right? So that's what I-
We didn't vote on it.
I did, too, but all right.
Nobody voted for action for closed session.
Shall we?
Okay. So I guess I'm not sure when I'm-
Mr. Horneck, sorry.
Well, let's vote to ratify and affirm the motions that were made. Well, that worked. Where's Mr. Nelson when we need him?
But I- Okay, let's move to actually-
Won't have to do it again, or if we didn't do it, to do it the first time.
Can we move to approve 3.02 and 3.03 in one motion?
Yes.
Just to make sure it's clear in a minute.
All the, okay.
Move to approve 3.02, 3.03.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chairman, I just want to make sure that we're voting to approve the appointments, not just the, because this just says the action. Just if we're going to do it right, I mean, do it over, we'll-
All right, I believe that we-
I'm sorry.
It's clear that we are approving the appointments.
Yes.
Okay. Are we good now?
Yes, I'm good. You're good.
Okay. All right. Moving on, we will move on to our invocation, our Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be, our colors will be presented by the Brookpoint High School. I want to thank our cadets, Gilly, Grayson, Reimer, and Elias. So I would ask you all to stand while our colors are presented, and Ms. Egan, will you lead us in the pledge?
Colors, halt. Left base, march. Colors, halt. Carry. Colors. Ready, cut. Freeze and go.
My pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Colors. Ready, cut. Order. Colors. Ready, cut. Right base, march. Over, march.
Thank you, you may all be seated.
Moving on, we will move on to our approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion regarding the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have a motion to approve the agenda with one addition. If we could add 6.01 under awards and recognition as a special proclamation, and move 601 to 602 and 602 to 603.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions regarding, any further discussions regarding the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So I will be moving us on to 6.01. I am going to recognize Mr. Hirons at this time for a proclamation this evening.
Madam Chair, I have a proclamation to recognize and commend Roberta Uring, Super Clerk, Stafford County School Board. Whereas Roberta G. Uring has served as clerk of the Stafford County School Board for the past two and a half, or two and one-half years, beginning on October 1, 2014. Whereas Ms. Uring will be joining her husband as they accept a new duty assignment with the United States Marine Corps in North Carolina, and will be resigning her position as clerk of the Stafford County School Board effective May 11, 2017. And whereas the Stafford County School Board wishes to commend Ms. Uring's service to the school board and proclaim to the community her contributions as clerk to the school board and as a Stafford County resident. And whereas Ms. Uring, a United States Marine Corps veteran, has proclaimed as, was proclaimed as the finest clerk in the Commonwealth of Virginia by school board members. And whereas the school board refers to Ms. Uring as super clerk during, due to her devotion to the students of Stafford County and her excellent organization skills and expertise that keeps the school board members and superintendent on track. Whereas Ms. Uring promoted efficiency, innovation, and sound leadership practices throughout her tenure with the Stafford County Public Schools. And whereas Ms. Uring was passionate about promoting wellness for all employees, which is evidenced by her organization of the first Stafford Education Foundation 5K-run fundraising event that raised over $3,000 for scholarships and teacher grants. Her promotion and management of Team Stafford County Public Schools in the Stafford Hospital 5K fundraising event for both 2016 and 2017, which also, which was also the largest participant in the race two years running. And her provision of physical fitness training to employees voluntarily on her own personal time. Now therefore be proclaimed on this 9th day of May 2017 that the Stafford County School Board and the superintendent express their gratitude to clerk of the board, Roberta G. Uring, for her service and main contributions made to Stafford County Public Schools and Stafford County community at large, and wishes her well in her future endeavors. Signed, Holly Hazard, Chair, and Bruce Benson, Superintendent.
And although with one hand we say goodbye, we also are very excited to welcome our new clerk who's working with us this night, this evening, Missy Hall, and so we are very excited to bring her onboard. We thank Roberta for helping train Missy and bring her along, so we know that Missy will be welcomed in our schools and everywhere, so we will have a new face there. But Roberta, you know, there's so much I could say, so I'm not going to, because I will get choked up. So I just thank you so much for everything that you've done for our board and to make us even a more professional and functioning board. So next, we will move on to our next proclamation. Ms. Healy, I believe that one's yours.
Did you award?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I did. I messed up. Gosh, can't read tonight without my, thank you for keeping me on track. So we will move on to our wonderful, one of our favorite parts is, of course, our awards. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Anne Emerson, School-to-Career Specialist for Presentation of Awards. I will bring Ms. Emerson down.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair and Dr. Benson, and all. I'd like to call forward students who have been, are being recognized for receiving a state-level or national-level Career Poetry and Poster Award. So please come forward now. Stoll, come on, you guys know who you are. You said hi to me already. Come on.
Come on down.
So while they're approaching, in celebration of National Career Development Month each November, Stafford County Public Schools holds a Career Poetry and Poster Competition. This is the 51st national competition. Students in grades K to 12 are eligible to submit artwork in three categories: poster, hand-drawn, poetry, and collage or computer-generated poster. This year, over 160 entries were submitted in eight categories. Nineteen of our local winners received either first, second, or third place at the state level, and seven entries received either first, second, or third place nationally. Before I recognize these students, I'd like to express appreciation to several of the teachers who've encouraged students that are here tonight. Mrs. Mary Ellen McCabe, could you stand up, please wave? Mrs. McCabe has actually become kind of an accomplished designer herself. I can tell she's teaching the kids the principles of great design. And also Mrs. Carla Jordan. So with no further ado, Leah Burke received state third place for her poster. Frances Fritz received third place at the state level. Can you wave your hand? Frances, I'm sorry.
Yep, wave your hand so we know who you are. Yeah.
Nathan received first place for his poster. Katie Calucci received second place for poetry. Sarah Goldsmith received second place for a hand-drawn poster. Marina England received first place at the state level for her hand-drawn poster. And now students who receive both state and national recognition. Raven Coleman had a national second place and a state third place. Congratulations, Raven. A national tie for third place. Rodolfo Nuno also a state first place. Excellent. Isaiah Wagner received state second place and national tie for second place. Andrew Hergenrother received state third place and national second place. And now on to our two students who won at the national level. Lena Olson received a poetry award, state second place, a poster award, state third place, and her poster collage won national first place. Congratulations, Lena. And Logan Zlatnik received state first place and national first place for his poster. And I'm going to make sure that one's out there for everyone to see, along with all this artwork, which has been on display at the website. Thank you guys so much, and we'll do the awards right outside after the recognizing other winners. So great work, guys.
Thank you. So everybody come up so you can get, so you can be seen out there by all of your adoring fans, so there can be a really good picture. Chris, can you help them come forward so they can be in the picture? We want to get right up there. Next, as they are taking their seats, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Anna Marie Bellino, our Coordinator of Fine and Performing Arts for Presentation of Awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson. It's my pleasure to recognize tonight's Stafford's most gifted musicians. This is really one of those parts of my job, as you all know, to recognize these outstanding students and their teachers for their commitment to excellence. So we're going to start this evening with Kyle Smith, who is a percussionist at Colonial Forge High School. This fall, Kyle auditioned amongst hundreds of high school musicians from across the state and was selected for the 2016 Virginia Music Educators Association, which we call VMEA. They're all Virginia jazz ensemble. Kyle's a percussionist, I think I might have said that, and we're very proud of his accomplishment. And I'd also like to recognize his band director, Rob Gillette, for cultivating the talents of this freshman. So I think we're going to hear a lot of great musicians from Kyle in the future. Let's give Kyle a round of applause. Next, we'd like to recognize our 2017 All-State Choir students. This year, 16 of Stafford County's finest vocalists earned a spot in the state honor, and we're very proud to share that Stafford took 2/3 of the 24 slots that were allocated for our district. You know, we're a little competitive. We're very proud of our choral programs and these students. Students, please come forward when your name is called. From Colonial Forge High School, Elona Bailey, Hannah Fullwider, James Howell, Claudio Mano, Brielle Melendez, and Mason Sigmund. From Mountain View High School, Catherine Crowe, Mackenzie Kush, Leah Garza, Chloe Stamper, Sunita Karrius. And from Stafford High School, Emily Carr, Sana Dowd, Dimitri Fennell, Natalie Malanefee, and Amberly Thomas. Also want to recognize our choral directors who are here, Barbara Perry, Benita Keane, and Joe Eveler, for their commitment and their dedication to teaching these wonderful young vocalists. Let's give these singers a round of applause. Let's go ahead and bring our directors up, and we'll do that.
Mr. Gillette, will you come up as well?
Come on up.
Next, we're going to recognize the 2017 All-Virginia Band students. To earn a place in All-Virginia Band, students go through two rounds of auditions, first earning a place at the top of their section at the district level in December, and then auditioning in February at the all-state level. So these students have earned a place in All-Virginia Band. Students, please come forward when your name is called. From Brookpoint High School, Jacob Mitchell. From Colonial Forge High School, Sydney Salata, Nicole Clark, Cougar Connolly, Emily Martinez, Sean McGinley, Jalen Mims, Jacob Nye, Philip Todd, and Jennifer Webber. From North Stafford High School, Max Schenk. And from Stafford High School, Hope Chesser and Dimitri Fennell. Congratulations to the four band directors, Veronica Sutherland, Rob Gillette, Chris Mallory, and Eddie Steenstra also, for their commitment and dedication to teaching these fine young musicians. Please join me in a round of applause. So wait, there's more. We also have four county band programs who've earned the recognition as a 2017 Virginia Honor Band. High school band programs earn this distinction when both their marching band and their most advanced concert band receive superior ratings at performance assessments that are in October and March. This year, 71 high schools, which is roughly around half across the state, can credit this accomplishment to their resume, and this includes our four Fall Stafford Schools. Colonial Forge High School, Band Director Rob Gillette. Mountain View High School, Band Director Jean Welch. North Stafford High School, Band Director Chris Mallory. And Stafford High School, Band Director Eddie Steenstra. Let's give these programs and these directors a round of applause. In addition, this year is a special year for Stafford High School because they are earning their status as a 10-year Honor Band. So VBODA kind of recognizes 10-year, those milestones, 10, 15, 25. So they're joining a group of very well-established programs, and so congratulations to the past, the present, students, and parents, and directors of Stafford High School. Finally, I'm thrilled to recognize two of our high schools, Colonial Forge High School and Mountain View High School, for earning the VMEA Blue Ribbon recipient. So when you're a VMEA Blue Ribbon School, your highest choral, your highest choir, your highest orchestra, and your most advanced band all have to receive superior ratings at their performance assessment in March. And we have some very excellent programs, but it is not always easy to get that accomplishment. And so I'd like to call up the directors at Colonial Forge High School, Rob Gillette, the band director, Barbara Perry, the choral director, and Debbie Tripp, the orchestra director, as well as the Mountain View directors, Benita King Choir, Tom McDonald Orchestra, and Jean Welch Band. And I would like to congratulate your students and your programs for this distinct honor. Can we all give them a round of applause? So as you can see, our music programs consistently exhibit a high level of musical excellence, and I want to commend the directors, the principals, the administrators who support them, and of course, our board for supporting the endeavors, musical endeavors of our students. So thank you very much.
I think that's all. All right. Okay. Thank you all for coming this evening. It's always great to recognize all the great accomplishments of our students as well as our staff. Moving on, we will be having one, a proclamation. Ms. Healy, I will ask you to read that one this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to wait till they finish exiting.
Sounds like all the fun's happening out in the hallway. Okay. A proclamation to designate May 8th to 12th, 2017, as Teacher Appreciation Week. Now therefore be proclaimed by the school board on this 9th day of May 2017 that the school board hereby designates May 8th through 12th, 2017, as Teacher Appreciation Week. The school board takes this opportunity to share our appreciation for Stafford County Public School teachers. Whereas a strong and effective school system is essential to the economic prosperity of Virginia and ensures that we continue to make social, technological, and scientific achievements, and whereas qualified dedicated teachers are the foundation of a- achievements, and whereas qualified dedicated teachers are the foundation of a successful school system and are fundamental to the strength of our Commonwealth, and whereas Virginia's teachers are entrusted with helping our students reach their full academic potential and exhibit an unwavering devotion to student success, and whereas teachers are essential to empowering families and communities to support our children and their potential to achieve, and whereas the Virginia Lottery, the source of nearly eight billion dollars for public schools since 1999, is partnering with the Virginia Tourism Corporation and the Virginia PTA for the second annual Thank a Teacher campaign to encourage Virginians to send thank-you notes to teachers across the Commonwealth, and whereas Teacher Appreciation Week is an opportunity for Virginians to join with the teachers around the country on the critical role our teachers play in shaping our children and the future of the Commonwealth. Now therefore be proclaimed by the school board on this ninth day of May, 2017, that the school board hereby designates May 8th through 12th, 2017, as Teacher Appreciation Week. Adopted by the Stafford County School Board this ninth day of May, 2017."
Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to our citizen comment time. I do have some speakers who have already signed in. If you have not signed in but would still like to speak, not signing up does not prohibit you, but I will read those names first to speak, and then I'll open the floor for others to come forward. Let me go over the protocol for public comments, and then I will read the names. What I would ask is, once your name is read, go ahead and line up off to the side so you don't have to crime over your seats and everything, and stand off to the side, and then just come forward one by one. So, individuals wishing to comment, excuse me, speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. We use the stoplight system. You will see, when the yellow light comes on, you have one minute remaining. When the red button starts to blink, that means your time has expired. Give you about five seconds to wrap up. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Also, public comment is just that, there will not be a dialogue with the board members as the speaker speaks. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. So, I will read the first, actually, seven names that are on here, just like I said, come to the side, and then I will extend an additional invitation for anyone else to come forward. First, Maya Wallach, then Craig Van, Dana Brown, Lou Wendling, Cindy Shelton, Michelle Wickman, and Terry Wellborn. There you go.
Is this how it works?
Yep, you got it.
Okay. Good morning. I was here in January, and I was talking about the unfair dress code. My name is Maya Wallach. I'm a sixth grader who attends Dixon Smith Middle School. I'm here today to talk about the need for diversity training. Let me tell you a little bit about me. I'm a biracial Jewish girl who loves mathematics, science, and programming, for example, Java, JavaScript. I want to be a software engineer in a couple years. I learned none of this from school, and that's okay. However, what is not okay is the lack of diversity in our schools. I don't think I've ever had a school where a core area teacher was black since moving out of Richmond. I have had to deal with students saying anti-Semitic comments since I was in elementary school in lunchrooms and classrooms. It is so bad, there are many Jewish students who don't tell people that they are Jewish because they are afraid. Public school is where all students should feel safe, no matter what they believe. Students are afraid to be who they are. Teachers and principals do not have the training to understand students that are not like them. As a girl of color who loves them, I had to deal with a group of boys and the coach of my robotics team ignoring me and the teacher not correcting them, but tell my mom I should start my own team. This isn't right. Why is it okay for them to treat me this way? Why is it okay for the teacher to say, "I should start my own team"? I have a couple of suggestions that might help stop this from happening to other students. Work with universities and colleges to create a training series about diversity. One class will not be able to cover all of the different types of students. My mom told me about the Teachers of Colors Conference. Stafford should attend that. Hire teachers who understand diversity and some teachers who are from diverse backgrounds. We need diversity training for all people who deal with students. We might not look like our teachers or have the same faith as them, but we deserve to have teachers and principals who treat us fairly, not target us, listen to us without prejudgment, give us a chance to succeed and be a role model to other students who aren't like us. Some students need teachers to help them. It is hard for us to trust teachers if teachers have a negative image of us because we don't look like them or don't have the same faith. This is not a reflection of my principal. She is awesome. She's over there. She is one of the only adults in the building I have a connection to. This issue is bigger than my principal, just as dress code is a bigger issue than her too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Benson. I wanted to begin by expressing my appreciation to you for the difficult job that you have as a board member. I do not envy your position at all. I wanted to take a few minutes to address my concern about teacher salary next year. I've worked at Stafford County for seventeen years as a middle school teacher. I'd like to start out by informing you of how a 1% pay increase would affect my yearly budget. I make approximately $52,000 a year, so 1% would go around $520. If divided that by twelve paychecks, I'd be bringing home $43.33 extra a month before taxes. What is 1%? Think about it. Forty-three dollars. Health insurance changed and no longer includes dental insurance, so my family had to add dental insurance, which was an additional $83 a month, which is almost $1,000 a year. What is 1%? I'm going to tell you. Not enough to offset my dental insurance, thus, a decrease in my paycheck. Please think about this as you decide on a 1%, because you really should be thinking about a 4% or 5% pay increase. I'd also like to respectfully ask Dr. Benson and the board of the purpose behind changing the salary scale from a step increase scale to a market median scale a few years ago. With that step increase scale, we were concerned about not getting paid for our years of experience. Now that you're manipulating this year's market median scale, there really is no difference between the two. When you manipulate the scale, you manipulate my livelihood and my families. Cuts have to be made, and I understand that completely. Reluctantly, I suggest that you make cuts to items like new textbooks, some student programs, instead of teacher salaries. Every year, when there's a shortage, the first thing to be cut is teacher salary. Without teachers, Stafford County Public School could not function. The only way to get the board supervisors to fully fund our school system is to make parents feel the burden, and I hate to say that because I love my job and I love my students. Not teachers. Teachers should not feel the burden every year. The lack of funding has been on the back of teachers for the past ten years. Programs like middle school sports, after-school tutoring, science clubs, which I'm hugely passionate about, they have to be thought about and cut, and hopefully, parents will want them so badly, they'll go across the street and say, "Fund our schools." Teacher salary should not be affected. I love my job. I'm not going anywhere. I love my school. But there are many others that are not in my circumstance that are hitting the road one county north. We, I, teachers, just want to feel valued. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live in the Rock Hill District at 41 St. Williams Way. I don't have a lot of prepared comments tonight. I just wanted to talk to you real quick about the budget. As you all know, I try to come to as many work sessions as I can, so I hear a lot of your discussions, and I do realize how painful it is every year. But what I'm hoping is, maybe you can find the money to give some of the experienced teachers a raise. I have never been in favor of beefing up our lower-end pay bands. As a parent, I don't want to attract the new and inexperienced teachers. I'd rather they cut their teeth somewhere else. I would rather that we have higher-paying salaries for experienced teachers, and that's who we're attracting. When people are transferring in with their husbands from Quantico or wherever they're coming from, they want to come to Stafford because they're experienced, and we pay more than the surrounding counties. That's more important to me as a parent. I've heard you talk about your ten, I think it's ten, growth positions that you try to budget for, for the unexpected, if we get a bunch of new influx of students, and I heard you guys, you know, hemming and hawing if you needed all ten, if you could do without, to pay for some other things. I don't think that you need to. I think, my opinion, that we can probably find at least seven times that. I think that we are wasting money, still, not using our scheduling software properly, and I don't think that we're scrubbing the budget properly. We still have a lot of classes that are half-full, some are even less than half-full. We have classes with five students, seven students, and we are wasting the teacher and the classroom, and we are buying books for that. And I'm not talking about combined classes. Some of our combined classes even only have fifteen and fourteen students in them. I'll be coming back to you with that later. As you might know, I'm working on some other committees right now, but I just, I think that there's room in our budget, and I think that we're wasting a lot of money, and a lot of teachers spreading them out for classes we don't need, and we could use some of that money perhaps to give raises to some of the teachers that I would like to keep. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I have Lou Wendling, Cindy Shelton.
My name is Lou Wendling, 1011 Blackbeard Drive, Stafford, Virginia. I am a retired Stafford County math teacher and a current substitute teacher at Brookpoint. I am raising my grandson, who is a kindergarten student at Anne Moncur Elementary. I've lived in Aquia Harbor since 1986. I have always been proud to be a school teacher in this county and proud of the education we give our students, and I still am. I am blown away by what I see the teachers do at Brookpoint and at Moncur Elementary. My grandson is the luckiest little boy in the world to be where he is. Any success he has in life is going to be due to the administrators, teachers, and staff at Moncur Elementary. Sadly, the high caliber of our schools is being maintained solely on the backs of the teachers. For seven years, they have been ignored financially. For seven years, the teachers have put their students in Stafford County public schools ahead of themselves and their families. This cannot and should not continue. If you won't pay them what they deserve, I will be the first one to tell them to pack their bags and leave Stafford County. Shame on all of us for allowing this to happen. We have failed our teachers. I have failed them by not coming here and speaking up for them. I think you have failed them by not standing up to the board of supervisors and demanding the funding needed to pay teachers what they deserve. This is one of the wealthiest counties in the nation, not just Virginia, but the nation. We have more than enough money in this county to pay our teachers. The board of supervisors is obsessed with being business-friendly and cutting taxes. This is being penny-wise and pound-foolish. If you don't pay your teachers what they deserve, you will lose them to other counties, and the school system here will become second-rate. No new business will relocate to a county with poor schools. I cannot stand by and watch the decline of the school system I have been part of for thirty years, and I cannot stand by and watch my grandson's wonderful teachers leave Stafford County. I can start doing my part by speaking up for these teachers and by holding you and the board of supervisors accountable. You both need to do your jobs and pay our wonderful teachers what they are worth and what they deserve. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and I mean everyone. I'm Cindy Shelton, and I inadvertently misunderstood. I thought you just signed in to show you're here, and last time I came, I didn't, so I didn't. I'm going to give you back three minutes. So, my apologies to everybody. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight, though. Michelle Wickman and Terry Wellborn are the two I have remaining on my list.
Good evening, Dr. Benson, members of the board. I too share that I would not want your job. Kudos to you guys, because this is not an easy one, and I understand that the decisions you make, you don't make lightly. My name is Michelle Wickman. I'm a teacher in Stafford County and a resident of Hampton Oaks. I'd also like to say that I've made these conclusions based on the data that was available to me, so if you hear something that's inaccurate, please let me know, and I'll certainly adjust my comments. Even former math teachers make mistakes. It is important to recognize that the mistake and subsequent contract adjustment last year was in no way, shape, or form the fault of any teacher in this county. I teach my children and my students that when you do something wrong, it is important to take responsibility and try to make it right if you can. I'd like to believe that the contract adjustment was approved because the board felt it was the right thing to do, rather than due to public pressure. Unfortunately, I am now inclined to feel that it was the latter. The contract adjustment should not be treated like an advance on a future raise. It was a wrong that was made right, and now it feels as though it's being held against us. Additional compensation for our teachers is long overdue, and many dedicated teachers in this county have spent years without raises or even credit for experience. Now they're being treated as though it is greedy to ask for more. The Compensation Task Force worked very hard to develop a better salary scale model, one that would not only give teachers credit for their experience, but would also bring those levels that were lax, at least up to, if not exceeding, the market median, and give Stafford County a more competitive salary scale. This model was created with the understanding that a COLA increase would be considered annually. The adoption of the model was a step in the right direction, but we must be very careful to make sure that it is implemented in good faith and in keeping with its intended goals. So far, the salaries for each level of experience have increased across the board since 2015, when doing a side-by-side comparison of the final scales. However, the same comparison between last year's salary scale and this year's demonstrates lower salaries across many levels, even resulting in several levels that had reached the 2016 market median now dropping back below it. This type of adjustment, especially on a yearly basis, offers zero stability for future financial planning and lessens Stafford's ability to compete with other counties. Many teachers next year will see no difference in their pay despite another year of experience. How can we expect to recruit new teachers or give our current ones any incentive to stay when we advertise a pay scale one year and the very next year advertise one that has reductions across the majority of the levels, even with a 1% COLA increase? Stafford County is losing teachers in droves. We're having a hard time recruiting them. Something else I tell my children is that...
Ah. If you have just the rest of that sentence.
I just have one sentence. Okay. Something else I tell my children is that actions speak louder than words. So, I hope that you'll consider my words and make a decision that demonstrates with your actions a true appreciation for the teachers of Stafford. Thank you.
As Ms. Wellborn's approaching, if anybody else would like to speak to the board, feel free to start to get up from your seat, make your ways to the side so you can follow on with Ms. Wellborn. Anybody who hasn't signed in, sorry, Terry, if you have not signed in, go ahead. There's a clipboard behind you to sign in. Sorry. Thank you for that public service announcement.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam Chair, Dr. Benson. I am Terry Wellborn. I'm the chairperson of the Stafford Education Association ESP Transportation Caucus, i.e. your pairs, monitors, and bus drivers. I'm here tonight to speak about the budget and the options for budget cuts. With the new pay banding pay scale, employees with about six years of experience or less will get up to a dollar-an-hour increase in pay. Drivers and monitors with over... Drivers and monitors with over six years and up to 10 to 20, even 35 years of experience will receive nothing for at least a year. I know we need to hire and retain new employees, but I feel that it is coming at the expense of veteran employees. Morale is already at an all-time low with no measurable increase in take-home pay for the past few years. As a 22-year veteran driver and trainer, on the new pay banding pay scale, I will receive zero increase in pay. I will receive, even if I'm put on the third level as a trainer, I will receive no increase in pay. Therefore, I'm requesting that you choose option three, which would give a 1% COLA across the board. At my current pay, that's approximately 20 cents an hour, $1.30 a day, $1,950 a month, $234 a year before taxes. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week. Today is Teacher Appreciation Day. Show your bus drivers and monitors that you value and appreciate them by choosing option three and giving the 1% COLA across the board. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, board members, Dr. Benson, I would like to comment on the needs of Stafford schools to redirect funds, to adequately reflect the work, experience, and experience of senior staff, teachers, who have continued to make Stafford schools a rewarding experience for students of the county. In two days, my daughter is arriving back from college, from Shenandoah University. She has done extremely well, due hugely, hugely, to the schools of Stafford County. My son is at Brookpoint as a junior. He is active in sports. He's active in student government. It's unbelievable what these schools offer in these teachers. From Garrisonville Elementary School, where Mrs. Cale was the principal at the time, to Mrs. Lloyd at Gale Middle School, to Brookpoint High School. It is unbelievable what our teachers are doing, including the staff, administrative staff, the principals, and the support staff of all types. Many of these experienced teachers have taken on huge amounts of responsibility now because of the cuts recently in the schools. They are not only offering, teaching bigger classes, but they are serving as mentors. They serve as key members of younger and younger faculty, and many times, they are serving in administrative duties to fill in. They are often the leaders in hallways. With the diversity of students and the growth of the county, they have become more important than ever with the growth of IB, AP classes, and special education services. These teachers are not to be taken for granted. They have not seen pay raises in quite a while. Even a 1% could keep some of these teachers here. One teacher in particular is retiring this year from Gale Middle School, Mary Ann Sapp, one of my son's favorite teachers. And she might not go if she felt deserving or valued in the school system. Okay? I have spoken with some Board of Supervisors and some local leaders. Oftentimes, they think that the redistricting is another word for mismanagement. I disagree. As a resident of this county, we see the houses. As schoolteachers, we see the crowding in the schools. So when there's a, when, two weeks ago, we found out that Dr. Benson's $6 million and your request for $6 million was being, had to be trimmed and cut. I spoke to some of the leaders and they acted very surprised. They thought they had given the full 1% increase for staff and that the schools could be able to do everything. It was my surprise at a work session about two weeks ago that the trimming started. And this is why we're here tonight, to ask you, please, try to value your teachers and all staff, including central office, who have not seen raises in a very, very long time and are so deserving. Thank you so much.
Don't forget to sign in. You know the drill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Teresa Thompson. I'm presently serving as President of the Stafford Education Association. I have a couple of points that I would kind of like to make this year, this evening. First of all, I would like to thank those that did come this evening to speak regarding salaries. And there has been a couple of comments made regarding the lack of speakers and the lack of people coming to plead their case. I'd like for you to consider the possibility of some of these reasons. Your young teachers, the 1% each year that was given with VRS, they actually saw that as an increase, where your more experienced teachers did not. That was pass-through. Plus, we've had to pay the taxes on that. So they're sitting pretty, pretty good right now because we've given them the enhancement and we've raised the beginning salary and we've talked about it being, and we're proud of the fact that we're now paying our beginning teachers $42,000, give or take a little bit, a year. I'd like to ask those young teachers, are they happy with making $42,000 for the next four, five years, possibly? Because with their new scale, unless we get a COLA, that's what they'll make for the next two, three, four years, until you and the Board of Supervisors deem that it's important enough to give COLAs. So that's, I think that's one of the reasons they're not here, because they're sitting pretty good right now. Your more experienced teachers, like myself, 28, 29, 30 years, we're really kind of stuck because the surrounding counties won't give us their years of experience. We have come before the board time and time again, to no avail. We're waiting till it's time to retire. Your middle-of-the-road teachers at 10, 15 years, they're saying, "Check you later. We're going elsewhere." And I think we'll really begin to see that even more. Because without the COLAs, our salary scale does us no good. We can move up the salary scale, but things don't change. And for me personally, when I was hired in Stafford County 28 years ago, I made plans with a salary, a top salary, in mind and made plans for my retirement based off of that salary. I will never see that salary. So not only are you affecting what we're making now, you're affecting your retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Feel free to come forward.
Hello. Carol Medawar. I live in the George Washington District and I am a former Stafford County employee. Former because of this, every year, time after time. And I've even said that, time after time after time. You've heard what other people said. I want to piggyback on a couple of things that they said just to make that point. I'm now serving on the National Education Association Board of Directors. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but there's a national teacher shortage. And if you don't get creative and figure out what to do, you are in a whole lot of hurting here in Stafford County. So one of the things that hasn't been brought up by some of the other people was this idea that we've come, since 2009, guys, we've been coming here year after year, begging and pleading for you to pay kind of what was promised when we sat down and we took a job here and when we recruit. And year after year, after you make this decision that you're going to make, you get a few months down the road when people start getting onto their summer vacations, and there's this little thing called salary lapse that pops back up, and suddenly you have millions of dollars that you hadn't accounted for. So that's a question that I would just leave out there, that that would be really nice to know. Is that happening again? Because that's been several years. You need to get creative. Offer some things that, like job sharing for teachers and like workload relief. And if you're not going to pay your teachers, which is the wrong decision, but if you're not going to, then you need to figure out a way to make them want to stay. Because I can tell you the conversations that they're having at home. Your younger teachers are looking at the rounds surrounding counties and they're saying, "I need to make this decision before I hit year 10 because then they're not going to pay me." So I would encourage you to not make that decision and to look at experienced teachers and to advertise that you are going to give everybody their experience levels. And when they come here and recruit, you're going to give them their experience levels. If you have a teacher that's math and special ed certified, like myself, and they come here, you want them to be able to get that. And it's absolutely shameful what we're paying our support staff. It is not a living wage and we need to do something about it. You are not going to be able to keep these people to be as loyal and wonderful if you do not address those. They're sitting around their table, trying to pay their bills every month, and they're thinking, "I can't do this anymore." You've got to address that. And then the first little girl that spoke, I just want to say one more thing about, before I run out of time. I have a talented, beautiful biracial daughter who is about to enter in the fall, her senior year, in Stafford County public schools, and she has never had a teacher who looks like her. So that first comment from the first little girl that said, "We need to do some things about diversity," I would echo that 10 times. I have a lot of kids sitting around my house last weekend and they were talking about some of the things that were said and done and, you know, luckily, she has this really great AP teacher who lets them discuss in class and lets them have that time and space to talk about what they're hearing at school and what they're feeling out in the world. And I would just encourage you to also take that little girl's heed and offer some diversity training. You guys have a good evening.
Sign in.
I will sign in.
All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Please come on forward. Okay. I don't see anybody leaping forward. So with that, I will close. Public comments, sorry, I have to refresh to get my agenda back. All right. Next, we will move on to our board member committee reports and comments. We will start with the reading of the Student Matters Discipline. Mr. Hirons.
On April 12th, 2017, a committee of the board met to consider two student discipline actions, or matters. The committee permitted student A to participate in graduation activities. The expulsion, no trespass restriction for student B was not lifted.
Thank you. Moving on to board committee reports. Are there any members who have committee reports? Mr. McCosker? Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I've got a late-breaking news from Ms. Daniel, that we had another DI team selected in the National Lottery. We have six teams advancing to...
Test, test, one, two? Sorry. Late-breaking news with, this is the gifted advisory. We had another DI team selected in a National Lottery. We now have six DI teams advancing to Nationals. That's Destination Imagination. And I was going to tell you that five teams were advancing to the DI, Destination Imagination Global Finals, but now it's six, which takes place May 24th through 25th at the University of Tennessee. Stafford County has a history of doing extremely well in globals and we hope and we wish the best to those teachers and those students that are moving forward and the parents supporting the Destination Imagination teams. Stafford County Public School Focus teachers met for their 10th annual symposium, which Mr. Nathan Levy, a special guest presenter, also presented at. So that was a special thing for the Focus kids and, I'm sorry, the Focus professionals. The Focus Festival was held on April 30th at Brookpoint High School. I know some of you probably attended. An apparent workshop on transitioning to middle school focus will be held May 17th at Stafford Middle School. And I encourage that folks, parents out there that have kids in elementary school that are identified as gifted or maybe want to try to get into the Focus program to attend something like this transition, because it is a big transition to middle school from elementary school at the gifted level. So that's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Great. Any other board committee reports? All right. Hearing none. We will move on to board member comments. We will start off. Ms. Egan, did you want to start us or no?
I don't really have too much to contribute, except for a word of thanks to everybody who called and sent emails with concern. As you all know, I had surgery a couple of weeks ago. I'm not fully recovered, but I don't want to miss too much of what my responsibilities are here. But I wanted to take a second to thank some of my friends on, in this little world that we live in here with the school board and the Board of Supervisors. While I was laid up, I had some good folks taking care of me. It's tough being a single mom. And I really appreciate everybody's concern. Holly and Jamie and Roberta and Susan Randall and Wendy Mauer and Laura Sellers all came to me, brought me food, and made sure I was, I was okay. So I just wanted to thank you all for helping me out in a time of need and I'm glad to be back. Thanks.
I'm sorry I woke you up with the dogs barking.
Those are big dogs.
We're glad to have you back, too.
I'm sorry, Chris. You were, you were, and Chris Connolly. I am so sorry. I had the Phantom Pizza delivery. So, and I never thanked you for that. So thanks so much. I didn't know who it was.
He was wearing, he was wearing this Battleship Gray shirt. He probably didn't let him in the, probably didn't let him in the door. Oh, is that the Stafford School Boil's shirt? Okay. Wow.
So thank you to you and your clan as well. Appreciate that, too.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Ms. Healy, do you have anything this evening?
Well, this is going to seem a little odd, but I wanted to wish a happy birthday to Mrs. Reeve. She's a kindergarten teacher at Garrisonville Elementary. I actually ran into her at Walmart on Sunday and she told me it was her birthday and she was going to visit her grandchildren. And I said, "You aren't retired yet?" I mean, she's been around forever and ever and ever and Mrs. Fitche was still there, too. She, she said they were chatting the other day, but I think Mrs. Reeve is an example of the wonderful, experienced, mature teachers that we have here. She gives 100%, more than 100% every day, you know, to all of her students. And I met her when my daughter was in her fourth grade class and shortly thereafter, she went down to kindergarten and she's been there for, I guess, the past 10 years or so since that. And gosh, I don't know, Mrs. Cale would know, probably close to 30 years, I would think at Stafford County. But, but she's, she is an example of what we have and the treasure we have in Stafford County public schools. And I have to say that I, I feel very badly when we're told we don't value our teachers or we don't appreciate our teachers when we don't have a pay raise. But it's not because there's not a value put on it, it's because there are a lot of competing demands. And well, I'm sure we'll have a discussion about that later. But somebody mentioned the VRS payments in the public comments. And I would like to point out that for the past five years, we, as a school system, have had to pay 1% of the salary of every employee to, into the VRS. And what we've done, we've done that, we had a choice under state law, but we did it as a pass-along. So for the past five years, there has been a 1% raise that went to the employee, but they didn't see it in their paycheck because it went to the retirement system. But hopefully, one day, when, you know, retirement comes to those lucky ones, where's Dr. Clark, who is a short-termer here? Hopefully, she and Dr. Mural will be enjoying that retirement, that that will be something to pay back. And there is, there is money being paid out, it's just not going into the paychecks. We've, we've got that 5%. We've got, you know, $2.5 million that, that we, as a school system, got a bill for this year for payments into the VRS that was totally unexpected. That had to be budgeted. I mean, you know, that takes away from available funding. So I know, you know, it's, you know, some people may not believe it. I'm speaking for myself, but I can't imagine anybody on the school board that does not value... value.
We appreciate the hard work that you have provided for us. You've kept us in line, kept us on the straight and narrow for the most part here. For all of the issues that go on, Roberta really has done an absolutely incredible job to make sure there's communication flow between the School Board, the administration, the public, the teachers, et cetera. When you email to Board Members, a lot of us will send, Auntie Roberta will be sent out to all of us. So, she has, she has a view that many people don't have. She gets to see a heck of a lot. And not only that, she has to run these Board Meetings to make sure we're all prepared. We always have our notepads and our pens. I like the, the ones that click, not the ones with the caps, by the way.
And she still, and she still finds time to cook for the convalescing.
And she provides service to the, the infirmed. So, Gunny, thank you ma'am for all the work that you've done. You have done a job well done, as they say in the Marine Corps. We appreciate it and simplify and good luck to you on your future endeavors.
Just real quickly to change pace a little bit, I received a text this morning, actually, from a mom in the district. "Okay, so the new Stafford School App is seriously awesome. Pass that along at your meeting tonight. Someone did a great job." So, I did want to just compliment the staff on the, on the Stafford School App. If those of you who haven't seen it, it is, it's, it's great. It's nice to see. It's one-stop shop on your phone to let everything, let, let parents, teachers, everyone know what's going on in school. My wife was talking about it yesterday. I said, "I've been on the School Board since December. This is the first time you've ever said anything about it and you're talking to me about an app." But anyways, good job, Bill. It's, it's really, it's great.
Ms. DeCater? Mr. McCosker?
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, so this time of year, it's, everyone's kind of winding down. They're finishing up their exams or getting ready for graduation. Kind of looking back at a hard, hard year. First, I'd like to thank the Central Office Staff, although I haven't been very pleasant to them all the time. I know they work extremely, extremely hard and they are true professionals, so I want you to keep up the good work even when the, when you're getting poked in the eye because that's your job, you know? To the 30 schools where the teachers and the support personnel are kind of, the tip of the spear, where they're touching the, touching the students, keep up the good work. It's tough out there. It's tough being a school teacher showing up every day and same time and doing your classes and, heck, I did it for, I did it for a year, two years, and then I wrote curriculum for a year during my 24 years in the, in the Army. And it was tough and I taught race, and I taught race relations. So, 150 adults in a class teaching race relations, that was a pleasant time, right? So, and you guys have it tougher out there, so, so keep, keep up the good work. For the, for the Communications Department and Ms. Diane Bender in the Central Office and, and many of you that I've come in direct contact with over and over again these last couple of months, thank, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to your jobs. And you heard Mr. Connolly say, shout out to the Comms Department about getting, and of course, Dr. Murrell and his crew about getting the app up. So, we appreciate that. We appreciate that hard work. Roberta Uring, as I mentioned, despite my baby face and boyish good looks, I got 20, I've been working for 30 years either for, for somebody or the boss in organizations. You're probably one of the best executive secretaries that I've come across by far. And although you only gave us two, two years and a couple of months, those two years and a couple of months, we're, we're at a very difficult time in this school division, transitioning into a new superintendent and staff and transitioning to a new board. So, best of luck. Guess you're going to, you go North Carolina, over to Cherry Point or Camp Lejeune, you're going to Lejeune, okay? So, best of luck to you, Roberta, and you're really going to be missed. I'm going to miss the heck out of you. That's all.
Okay, we've done many of our thank yous. I would like to just say and echo what some of my Board Members have also said. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, but one of the things I also like about that, the naming of that week, in all the buildings that I have had the pleasure of being a parent and we always make it about our whole staff in Stafford County Public Schools. I know when we go, I don't go and say, you know, "How many meals do we need?" We, we recognize all of our staff because so many of us have a impact on each one of our students. And teachers have an amazing impact. If you've been here on some of the four years, five years almost, that I've been on this Board, I usually shout out to a couple of my teachers or people that were part of my life that I kind of wonder if they, where they thought I would end up. But Mrs. Hudak, who was our, my second grade teacher, who I absolutely did not want because she was an older teacher and I wanted one of the young, pretty teachers. My mom still tells this story. I was so embarrassed. Mrs. Hudak sat at my graduation. She and I became very good friends, even though I totally did not want her. She made my handwriting better, I can tell you that. Now, you wouldn't know it. So, I always look at that of how much our teachers and our staff, counselors, really work for our students. And I think that's just such an amazing gift that we have as, as a county, is the teamwork that we have here because there is so much to be done and we have such great students and working together, we can help them even achieve more than, than they ever dreamed because I certainly did more than I ever dreamed. I had the distinct pleasure of my daughter writing something that was published and if you read between all the other stuff that she wrote, she wrote about how much she despised math. Anybody who has known Charlotte has known that Charlotte from about second grade on said she would not be a mathematician. But she wrote in there and she said, "I knew I couldn't do math because of some limitations I felt that I had, but I can write. And the reason I know I can write is because this first grade teacher of mine told me I could write and encouraged me." So, to Mrs. Teresa Burden, who I know is, you stole at Conway, she was at Margaret Brent with us, she was shouted out in that piece, which I thought was very ironic of the timing. So, we do know as parents how wonderful you all are. It is certainly not due to lack of appreciation. We many times are handed limited resources and we have to figure out the best ways to deal with those. It is not something we envy. Believe me, the other thing I would also say is when you run for the School Board, no matter if it's the people sitting up here or those who have run and been here before us, you have to love the school district or you would not be sitting up here and doing it. We love the school district and we do fight for it, but we do not always win. We are a team of seven, but the broader team that we get is going to be helpful as we move our voices forward in whatever way we want Stafford County and its education system to move. I believe many of us want something that's not an average or meeting standard school division. I think all of us up here, I think I speak for us and I know I speak for Dr. Benson. He and I speak about it often. We want to be that top percent. We are starting to implement a plan to get there and to continue to get there and we want to do it as a team and I hope that we will. With that, Dr. Benson, your comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express my appreciation to Ms. Uring for all of the support she's provided over the last couple of years. Just, you know, incredible clerk, no question about it. Best clerk I've ever worked with, no question about it. But more than that, has become part of the SCPS family in relatively short order, so we appreciate you that in, in that area as well. So, thank you so much and we wish you best of luck.
All right, with that, we will move on to Consent Items. We have, I believe, three items for consent. Do I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or pulling anything from consent? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of Consent Items 1001, 02, and 03, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On a point of order this evening, I'm going to ask Dr. Benson to make some remarks on Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very quickly, one of the items that the Board approved in the Consent Agenda is the rest of the reorganization for our Learning and Organizational Development Department. And we have, I think, most of those folks here. We recognized a couple a little bit earlier, but I'd like to just very quickly identify the folks and have them stand up and give the Board an opportunity to see who they are. So, Anna Marie Bellino for our Teaching and Learning Facilitator, fine in the Performing Arts, and I'm just going to do the content area for the rest of them, okay?
Stay standing, stay standing. We want to see your team.
Janice Brunson for Elementary Literacy. Sarah Crane, who has something else going on for the reason that she could not be here tonight, but Secondary Literacy. Stephanie Felinger for K-12 Gifted Services. Kimberly Hayden for Elementary Math. Mike Justice for Wellness and Athletics. Eric Powell for History and Social Studies. Mike Pratt for Science. Kathleen Stob, did I get that right? Stoby, Kathleen Stoby for Secondary Math. Lisa White-Murrell for CTE. And Liesel Yuski, did I get that right? I did, okay, for World Language and Culture.
Let's welcome our new group, our new team.
At the same time, we'd like to announce that Melanie Daniel will be assuming the position of Supervisory in Student Services and will be working with our Guidance Counselors as part of her responsibilities across the division as a whole. And Mary Ann Johnson will be becoming a math specialist at Gale Middle School.
Thank you to everybody in your new, in your new roles and we look forward to the, to the work that'll be being done over the summer and as we move, as we move our division forward. All right, moving on to our action items. Our first action item, 11.01, Adoption of the School Board FY18 Budget. Do we have a motion for approval or at least for discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll move 11.01 for approval.
Second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. I believe we will be certainly having discussions, so I will give the motion maker and the second first choice, but you may defer to-
If anyone else has an option to speak, if they like.
Anyone want to start with comments regarding 11.01, the budget? Okay.
I'll go quickly.
Will it, Mr. Connolly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, this, this budget process has been a learning experience for me. Interesting to see how things occur, how they get broken down, how they get reviewed. You know, my day job, I'm up in Washington and we deal with budgets constantly and we do not do a good job with them. So, you know, you go into these processes with a watchful eye, assuming that there's waste, assuming that there's places to cut, assuming that the cupboards aren't bare. And I come out of this process feeling pretty confident that, yeah, you know what, somewhere there might be something on the cupboard that we left, but for the most part, they're pretty bare as far as where these cuts happened. You know, I want to echo some folks up here when they talk about, you know, valuing teachers. The teachers are certainly valued and I would say education as a whole is valued. And although it's easy to look at dollars as the price of value, the cost of value, but, but not, not always, at least not in this room over these past few months when we've worked on this budget. There's been times I've looked at line items and said, "What about here? Why do we need this?" And then another Board Member would chime in and explain why we did need it. Because priorities span across a large area and education as a whole takes a lot of moving parts. And, you know, I, I learned a lot from that. There's a lot of important things that go into this and, you know, I just want to say, you know, again, as, as a dad with four kids in the system, I can tell you that the teachers are valued. And to the gentleman in the back, he made an excellent point when, when he said, you know, he gave his salary and he said, "So, when you break it down to 1%, we're, we're talking about a really small amount." That's a really good point. It also really worries me that we're having a hard time coming up with that small amount because, one, it's a concern that that small amount can really affect someone's lives like it does, but two, it's the reality and it does. So, sir, you, you make a good point and you also make a very good point when you said, something I had not thought about, when you said, "You know what? Maybe we should cut other areas so parents recognize it and they go across the street and make some noise." That is a valid point. It really is. So, I, you know, I just, I, just to bring it back, this has been an experience in this, but I, I will tell you that I really feel like this Board has looked at every possible way. I mean, y'all, you'd be surprised. I mean, there were, there were conversations going on among staff as to how to save money on gas prices by looking at futures and talking about districts in other parts of the country that actually invest in futures trading on gasoline to save money. I mean, that's, that's pretty committed in trying to find savings. So, I, I feel like this Board has done a good job really taking a look at that. You know, I know that the priority going in was to take care of the parents and take care of the support staff and, and I believe that's, that's, that's been done and there's a plan in place to look at the teachers, but I do encourage the Board to make priority into next year. Now, it's time for the teachers and now it's time for smaller class sizes. And I think methodically, we take it step by step, but we got to stick by that. And if there's other things that come up next year that might seem tempting, that cost money, I just suggest you, everyone right now, go into that attitude that we're not going there and then next year is going to be the priorities as well. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Who would like, anyone like to go next?
I can make my comments here. I made some notes, I may bounce around a little bit and I'm typically not very good about doing that, so I apologize if I get completely scatterbrained. Hopefully try to also respond to a couple of issues or a couple of items that were brought up during a public comment. To start with the COLA and the model, the market model and one of the speakers, one of our teachers, said that the Compensation Task Force went into that with the assumption or the expectation that there would be associated COLA every year to ensure folks do get some I don't know if that was necessarily an assumption. It's, it's probably a good one to have and I think going forward, we, we need to think in those terms as much as the way Mr. Connolly was speaking. A few years ago, I remember during Board of Supervisors discussion, when they passed their budgets, probably five, maybe six years ago, of course, you know, there was a large contingent of educators in the room that night to speak to the Board of Supervisors, but there was one gentleman who happens to be a friend of mine, who's not a teacher, and he used a jar with rocks as a demonstration and he demonstrated how if you put all the small rocks in first, the large rock doesn't fit in the end. But if you put the large rock in first and then all the small rocks will fall into the jar around that large rock. His analogy there was, "Well, you got to take care of the large- His analogy there was, well, you got to take care of the large rock first, that being in his discussion, teacher compensation. And I think that's probably something that we need to set as a priority with the board. I'm looking towards next year's budget, FY19, and setting that as a priority, that we put into the baseline of the budget, or the expectation of the budget going in, a minimum of 1% COLA each year. I know that gets us started, and 1% doesn't sound great, but it gets us started and that becomes the baseline. So enhancement on that, getting up to 2%, 3% isn't as big of a hurdle year to year. So I hope we can do that going in. The other thing that I recognized, and someone spoke to this, about the Board of Supervisors being sort of surprised that the 1% COLA wasn't fully funded. I shouldn't say this in public, it doesn't really surprise me, it kind of frustrates me. I've also seen postings by members of the Board of Supervisors saying, well, they thought they fully funded the superintendent's funding request. Well, they didn't fully fund the superintendent's funding request this year. Last year, they like to take credit for that. But they most certainly didn't fully fund what Dr. Benson even brought to this board initially. There was still a $5.4 million gap in his initial request to us or recommendation to us. So, you know, there's some challenges there. We need to do a better job here on the board of educating our counterparts over there. And I don't blame them, you know, I'm a little frustrated, but I don't blame them. They have a lot of other priorities and a lot of other concerns that they have to keep their visibility on. And, you know, they do have the expectation that the school board will help educate them on our needs. And, you know, perhaps we did not do a good enough job at that this year. I think we worked well together this year. I had several personal meetings with their Finance and Budget Chair to lay out and go through our budget requests very specifically. And frankly, she did try hard to find some additional funding. She was one of the drivers behind getting us at least a small additional $334,000. But in the end, you know, we were still left with a large gap. And this year's budget was the most difficult since my first one on the board. And that one was the year that we, when we adopted our final budget, we eliminated or reduced by 55 teaching positions and reduced the number of math specialists throughout the county. I voted no on that budget. I couldn't support that. One of the reasons I will be voting yes on this budget is we do now, in this budget, get us back to fully staffed with our math specialists. That's something very important to me. It's been something very important to my family. My children have taken advantage of math specialists and math education in elementary and middle school. And it's been so beneficial. I don't know what we would have done without having access to those math specialists when my children were going through. But back to the Board of Supervisors, one of the other things that I want to work towards, so the total expenditures for schools is about 51% of the total county budget. And this year, the county had new revenue reported of $10.7 million. That's a pretty nice chunk of change. That'd be several pennies on the tax rate if that were done by raising taxes alone. They have, the Board of Supervisors has set the strategic path to be able to pay for things in this county by way of increasing economic development. With a $10.7 million take this year, I think it's probably, they could argue it's working. They're keeping the tax burden on the citizens low and increasing economic development and creating more revenue streams from the business and commercial world side, which is a good thing, you know? But with that $10.7 million, our school system got $3.1 million, which comes out to a little more in 29% of the new revenue. If we had received 50% of the new revenue, we would have had an additional $2.2 million. We'll remind them that the COLA, 2% COLA cost was $1.9 million. So if we had received 50% of the new revenue, we would have been able to fund what was in our approved budget, our recommendation to the members of the Board of Supervisors. So one of the other things I want to work on over the next year from the Finance and Budget Committee is working with the Board of Supervisors to come to some sort of agreement that they recognize that 50% of all new money should go to the school division, to keep us in line with where they're funding us on the budget as a whole. I don't necessarily always associate myself with comments of one of our citizen activists, Mr. Fredoroff, but he comes before us often, he comes before them often, saying that years past, the school division was 56, 57, 58% of the total county budget. And it's continued to go down, and now we're down to about 51%. If they continue to fund us at less than 50% of new revenue, that total expenditure for schools is going to continue to go down. It would be okay if we were not, if we were a county that was not growing in population. We're expanding population, we're expanding population every day. So that's why it would be, is so important that they continue to fund us at a minimum at the level that we are currently as an expenditure within their whole budget. I would encourage more, more. And, you know, they are doing, they're doing it without raising taxes. They should be, you know, pounding the drums as loud as they can on that because that's something that counties compete on. And they do go to the lending agencies and that's something they tout on. And lending agencies, you know, look very favorable, or rating agencies look very favorable to that. We're not a burden to the taxpayers. That's really important. And they need to recognize that, and I hope they do. You know, and my job is to help educate them and help encourage them to do that. And my commitment to the teachers today is, that's what I'll be working on over the next year, is working on some sort of agreement that we get 50% of all at a minimum. These are minimums, okay? This isn't a maximum. I say, "Oh, great, yeah, we got 50%." No, that's the minimum. Minimum 1% COLA every year. So everybody does realize at least some increase. And we start there with a budget. In a good year, you know, 3% would not be out of the range, would not be that difficult to get to. We're doing a lot of good things in this budget that are being overshadowed by the bad things that we're doing or not, the good things that we're not able to do, the opportunity costs we're losing now. Math specialists, I am ecstatic that we are, is it fair to say, fully staffed math specialists?
Yes.
Fully staffed math specialists.
One full-time.
Falmouth Elementary and Drew Middle School are the last schools that share a CTT. We're getting a CTT in there. We're also getting the diagnosticians, a couple more of those, correct?
Yep.
Looking for some of the reminders on a couple of those small details. We are, you know, we're making a significant investment in our service employees, in our bus drivers, and in our paraprofessionals. You guys are absolutely right, you know. It is the less experienced ones that are reaping the larger benefit. But that is also where our biggest gap and our biggest issue is. And, you know, it's our job to be able to say that. If we're going to vote on it, we have to be able to say it. I wish it wasn't the case. I wish we were taking care of the senior teachers and senior bus drivers and senior paraprofessionals just as much as we are the younger ones. But, you know, those things, and we are increasing that professional development. We're starting that teacher summit. You know, I've gone into classrooms, I've talked to teachers about, the ones I've talked to are excited about it. They're thrilled to have a division that is recognizing the need for professional development and recognizing teachers as the professionals they are. So we are doing some good things. You know, because we're doing those, I'm not happy, I'm discouraged that we're not doing all good things, but this is a budget that we can get through the year and at least accomplish a few things along the way. And you have my commitment to the things I said I'd work on here over the next year for you guys.
All right, any other comments? Comments? Ms. Healy?
Just briefly, I appreciate Mr. Conley's comments because as a new board member, you know, I think you really got it quickly. I know Mrs. Decatur as well, this baptism by fire coming in. It's always hard at budget season, but this has been particularly challenging because of the new approach we're taking to the budget. Dr. Benson had this scrubbed before it even got to us. There were things that were cut out before it got to this board. And this board had the unpleasant job of cutting out even more. And I appreciate Mr. Hyren's summary because there are a lot of things in this budget that really are not discretionary. I mean, the new positions that we're adding, we're funding positions that we added this year at the cost of $1.2 million. That's just to keep the ones we added this particular year. And then we're projecting new positions for next year for almost $2.7 million. That's close to $4 million to pay for new positions. That money has to come from somewhere. Where, you know, the VRS contribution rate increase that I mentioned earlier, this is not the matching, or what we're, the flow-through, whatever you want to call it, that we finally hit the fifth year of. So for the past five years, we've been paying about $2 million a year. Is that more or less, or is our budget, is that right, Mr. Fulmer? About $2 million a year, we have been passing to the employees for them to in turn pass it to the VRS. So even though, as I mentioned before, there's no increase in your take-home pay, there is an increase in what's being contributed to VRS. So on top of that, the school system got a bill this year that had not been anticipated at all for $2.5 million. So these expenses have to be paid. You know, we've cut back on the number of buses we wanted to buy. One of these years, it's going to catch up with us because we've got some buses that are getting some age on them, and we're going to have to even buy more of them. $100,000 or so dollars per bus, they don't come cheap. You know, we're cutting back on the computer replacements, which we all want to keep up with that because that affects, you know, the classroom every day. Materials and supplies are being cut back, purchase services are being cut back. There's all kinds of cutbacks. You know, in a perfect world, you know, we would be able to pay more money. But I don't see where it's going to come from in this budget. I agree with Mr. Hyren's in terms of priorities, but I don't want anybody to take it as a promise because we can't promise anything. We can promise to try, but we can't promise raises. We can't promise what you're going to get in the future. That's just not practical or possible, you know, in a world that we live in. One thing we could consider doing as a board is to look at it mid-year and see where we are, if there's something we can do. I don't know, things don't look very rosy for next year. And I know there's a lot of things that weren't funded that are going to be coming back up for consideration. There's probably going to be things we haven't even thought about or don't even know about today that we're going to have to pay for. But that's something that, you know, I would ask this board to consider looking at, whether it be for a stipend or, you know, for, you know, a late-funded raise. No promises, but if there is some funding available that we were not aware of or that comes available, I certainly would like to consider that for raises. But one thing also that's in this budget is to extend that 1% that went additional to the teachers last year to the non-teacher scales. You know, I was one of the persons who were advocating for that extra percent last year because I didn't think it was fair. I didn't think it was fair because if a mistake had been made in advertising, to take it back. So I didn't consider that in advance on this year or evening out or anything. But I do, I do consider it fair to give that 1% to the non-teacher scales. That's at a cost of about $626,000. So there's, there's no fat in this budget that I see. And I appreciate all the work that Dr. Benson and Mr. Fulmer and his staff have done because they've done something this year that has never been done before, and that's look at this from the beginning. And we found that out when we got that audit report, that there was some different kinds of work being done. But that's not the case this year. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCosker?
I'll be pretty quick. So, welcome to budget season, I guess. Coming into this, as a first-timer, I can tell you that I'm pretty distraught. That's why I tried to sit there for a minute and gather myself. I probably shouldn't be crying up on the podium, huh? Because I'm an adult. However, if you would have told me when I ran for this position that I would come into it and do some of the things that we've had to do so far, I'm not sure that I would have run, truly. It's not easy, it's not fun. I don't like to listen to the teachers comment about the measly, you know, $400 that a 1% COLA would have given them. And, you know, the fact that that is life-changing, and I understand that. But at the same time, I don't think that I can easily, you know, recuse myself from voting or vote against this budget because this budget does do some really good things, some things that I wholeheartedly agree with. And for those of you that did the math, I was right there with you. I did the math as well, as far as what that 1% COLA would have gotten, a few, you know, different salary scales. And I just find it frustrating that what I had to do in order to make a decision was decide whether or not I was going to vote to give that amount to very deserving, hard-working teachers, or if the same amount would impact a different group of employees' lives more. And quite honestly, that's why I'm supporting this budget. And I know that that's not the best way to go about things. So as far as the comments that have been made so far this evening, I could absolutely agree with and echo every single one of them, the commitments. You know, I really, I want to work very, very hard and diligently to ensure that I'm not put in this position again because it's not fun. And I don't want to have to choose one employee group over another when trying to decide what kind of budget to pass. So I guess that's about all I can say about that for this evening.
Mr. McCosker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks, it's refreshing to hear the board members, like I, I have concerns about the budget as well. So, most of you know my position on this matter, and I won't vote in favor of this budget, as I mentioned last work session, without taking care in some way of our senior teachers. I'm happy that we are funding our paraprofessionals and bus drivers. Our paraprofessionals will be getting about $500,000 this year. However, they need approximately $2 million to get them onto the bottom of their comparison scale, $2 million to get on the bottom of the scale. So we have a lot of work to do there. Our paraprofessionals support our teachers. They're the right hand, left hand of many of our teachers and do a phenomenal job, as do our bus drivers. Last year, many of you remember how I fought hard for the 2% bump in the salary scale due to our teacher scale mistake. That effort led to a 1% bump, as Ms. Healy mentioned, that many board members here supported. But I did push hard for that 1% because it wasn't- But I did push hard for that 1% because it wasn't just the mistake that was made on the scale, but I knew that the salary lapse money was there. And I knew that you were so far behind due to years and years of neglect on the salary set, on the salary lapse, as found out by our audit, that we had done. So we worked so hard over the years, and, and those, those years where the audit told us that there were tens, millions of dollars each year in salary lapse that were put to other places in our budget, those were your pay raises and those were class-size reduction positions. And now we, under Dr. Benson, we are trying to, we are trying to right the ship. We were trying to get back to a solid budget where we can put our salary lapse to good work and get it down to the 1%, 1.5%. That's standard across the board and educational institutions and companies alike. And I think they've done that this year. You know, we've worked hard over the last two years to get the budget fixed. Chris Fulmer and his team, under the leadership of Dr. Benson and some, and many of the board members here, worked hard to get this budget to the right way, to show, to show the board, to show the executive forum up here that here's the budget, here's what their money is, now put your priorities, board, put your priorities on this budget and so that it can be approved. I mean, that's kind of our job. We put our priorities, we go, we write our priorities, we talk about our priorities. We're presented the information which was presented, I think, and I agree with many of my board members, this year was fantastic. Every little detail was explained to us, this board, and we put our priorities on it. So Mr. Fulmer and his crew are doing a fantastic job and they got the budget down to a very, very, I'm very, I'm very convinced that Mr. Fulmer and his crew have done a super job and got the budget down to, to where it needs to be, whereas terms of, in terms of visibility, transparency, and explaining to the board members and, and the school division staff where exactly all the money is going. So we're doing some great things in this budget. However, we can't assume, and here's, and here's, and here's my, you know, my angst is, you know, we're trying to do a lot, I, I was trying to do, I'm not going to speak for the board. I was trying to do a lot of good things for a lot of people, and since I've been on this board for five years, and I think I fought hard. But we can't, we can't cut our senior teachers, our mid-to-senior teachers, they can't be the first people that, when we bring, when we bring the budget across the street to the Board of Supervisors that we cut. We can't cut that salary lapse. I mean, we can't cut that salary bump for them. We went, it used to be a step model where every year that, we gave them a step. And now we went to this comparison chart, whereas we have to, we have to give our teachers something so that they feel valued and they feel, they feel valued. We can't, they can't be the first cut. You know, our teachers and support personnel salaries have to be in our base budget, just like our buses and our computers. And once they are taken care of, then we start with our, our programs, our new programs. Like, I, I shouldn't see any more new program requests after telling the teachers that we can't afford to give them any money, we're going to turn around and, and give money to some other program that we just start up. I, I don't see that, that's not going, I don't know if that's going to happen, but I don't see that as, 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 as being, being a broker for our teachers. You know, these teachers and support personnel are the backbone of the school system, our mid and senior personnel, in any system, whether it's an educational system or it's a company, or it's the Army, or it's the Marines. When, when our senior folks leave, they call it brain drain. And it's a big problem because when, when you're, when you're most educated, and your most experienced, educated employees leave a system, it, the system really fails and it fails miserably. And of course, that failure will trickle down to the students. So what, what I would ask, again, I, I'm not going to support the budget, but what I would ask, and Mr. Hirin's had, had some great ideas, but you know, when we go back into our next budget session, let's, let's put our employees first. Let's make, they're, they're going to get paid, one way or the other. They're going to get their raises, they're going to get something. Then we go about, we, we, that is going to be, that, that should be our board priority, our board, that should be a, a must fund for us, a must fund, number one. Number two, I think, as Ms. Healy mentioned, that we can, as a board, take a look at, at a mid-year, mid-year something. Take a look at our, our mid-year situation. As one of the folks in the audience said, "Take a look at your salary laps, maybe it's even more this year." I don't think so, but maybe it's even more this year. Maybe we get a windfall. I don't know. Let's take a look at a mid-year for our, our teachers, especially the teachers that didn't get anything, our six-to-29-year veterans. Dr. Benson, I'll, I'll challenge you and I'll help you to work with it. Let's, let's try to, let's try to do something for those folks throughout the year. As somebody mentioned, sometimes it's the little things about taking something off the plate. Sometimes it's an extra day off. I know that's, gosh forbid, we don't match the, the county over there on our days off. But maybe think outside the box and how we can help our teacher population feel, feel a little bit more valued and that. And you're doing a wonderful job on a lot of fronts with visiting the schools and, but, but we could think, I think we could think about something to help out these folks. So that's another budget season. Thank you very much.
Ms. Egan?
Dr. Benson, I just have a quick question. As we've gone through each year, we've, we've looked at the different, we, we looked at the teacher group, we looked at the, the nurses and adjusting their salaries, we've now looked at the paraprofessionals and, and the, and the bus drivers. Do we have any other employee groups that we have not looked at yet? And I just want to throw that out there because if they're watching, I don't want, and I know for a fact that administrative assistants have brought this up as well, that they've not been looked at yet. So I just want to make sure that they hear that we haven't forgotten about them and it's, that's not the only thing we're going to concentrate on at the next budget. So if there are other employee groups that have not been taken care of yet, I want them to know that we haven't forgotten about them and they, they also are going to be taken care of, just like we did with the paraprofessionals and the school bus drivers this year.
You are correct, Ms. Egan. We have not looked at a number of other employee groups. Administrative assistance would be a large, a group in there, folks, whether they're in schools or working at the central office level. But, you know, we want to make sure that we do this kind of analysis for every one of our employee groups and that we adopt a model that will help improve our, our position over time. And it, and it is over time. It's going to take us a while, just like it will with continued support of the teacher, of the teacher scale. The, the more traditional step model, you know, we had multiple years where we were not, were not available, able to advance folks some step because of the amount of differential that was required to, to do that. So it's just, it's going to take us some more time. We've made some progress and we, we certainly have identified some areas where we want to see some continued growth, but, you know, we're committed to, to going after this for the long haul.
I will try to make my comments to the point, many of you know sort of where I come out on this. The board has, in this year and over the last couple of years, worked very hard on trying to come up with priorities to meet the, the numerous needs of the division, which there are numerous needs. Some of you may have seen the letter to the editor signed by several of us about talking about Dr. Benson's being here and how we had to focus first on a lot of operational stuff. And now we're moving more, hopefully, into instructional in a variety of ways. All of us would like it to be on sort of a rocket path, however, the money doesn't come or flow that way. But we have to have a plan, and I believe that we are starting to become a division that plans. And if extra money, additional revenues come in, I think we have a plan where we know it would go. However, what I would characterize this budget as, we met a lot of really neat goals. I do believe we are going to impact classrooms and students with this budget. Are we impacting it to the extent that I would like to? Maybe not. Probably, very much not. I'd like it to be a larger impact. Many people know I think in themes, or I try to. I would call this a budget that is a growth budget, meaning we're having 700 kids more coming, we are growing in terms of positions, we are running out of space, we are dealing with growth. So in a growth budget, the only way to fund a growth budget is going to be with a growth in expenditures, you need a growth in revenues. Unfortunately, last year, we were promised over 1.2 million dollars from the state that at least this board a year and a half ago said, "Wow, I don't think the state's going to meet their targets," and they did not. And that money was removed from us. This year, we hear promises when we get to the state, "Oh, we're funding teacher raises, bonuses, any other name you can come up with." Well, in February, there's supposed to be money coming for only a limited amount of employees, and again, only if revenues are met. So I guess my challenge that I issue to all of us, if we are in a growth community which is going to require growth in expenditures, for 86% or 84% of our budget is invested in our people, that's where we are putting the majority of our funds. So growth there is impacting, but we also are going to have buildings, places, other things to respond to this growth we are going to need. My final, my comment, I hate to repeat, is if we are going to be in a growth community with growing expenditures, we need to find a growth in revenues. The state has not helped us there, it has hurt us by also issuing mandates, as referred by Mr. Hirin's. If we are a wonderful and growth part, and I believe people come to Stafford County because of our school district, that's what I'm hearing, I certainly attended enough, a lot of redistricting meetings and will be attending a lot more potentially, people are coming here because of the schools. If we aren't going to grow, grow our revenues to invest in those schools, I have grave concerns. I do believe we have funded a lot of great things in this budget. Do I believe that that a lot should have been a lot, would have liked it to be a lot more? Yes, I certainly would. But I will be supporting this budget. I believe that the board has done a lot of work and agonized over a lot of decisions on this, on this budget. As I've said, and as happened last year, we started on the next budget about a month after we passed this one. So let's team together because if we don't solve the growth problem, people coming are great, but we need to be able to pay for them. And we need to be able to do that in our school system because we're, we're predicting 700 new kids coming. I believe it will be more than that come September. On that note, any other comments?
Just one, one quick follow-up if I could. For you guys who came out tonight, we see some of the faces often, but we need to see all your faces, faces as often as we can. Our budget calendar, you know, we set our budget priorities in September, actually late September. That's where, where the building blocks start. I know it's, it's burned some for, for us to ask you to come to meetings and be fairly aware and, and, you know, know this budget book as well as have it open as often as we do. But there are a couple of really important times. There in September, when we set our budget priorities, if we can come, if we can hear from, from, you know, from folks on what are the priorities in the community, what are the priorities within our employee groups, that's really going to help us to be able to set the, the building blocks for the budgets, okay? We know, you know, we can assume compensation, that's what's important, but it helps us to hear it, okay? And the same process goes for Board of Supervisors as well. You know, don't make yourself scarce anytime you can dedicate to it. We sure do appreciate it. And we, we, we do appreciate you coming and speaking to us. And it's, it's, it's tough. We always typically have a packed house for the late day, late action, last action, the end of the line. It'd be helpful to start at the beginning of the line, too. So, thank you, guys.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of 11.01, adoption of the FY '18 school budget, say aye. Aye? Those opposed?
Nay.
Madam Clerk, were you able to calculate? All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the motion passed by a vote of 6 to 1.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to 11.02. This item relates to our capital infrastructure needs. I won't go again into growth on that, but I would like to say before we consider this item, I'm going to take some privilege here, is regarding this, as has been referenced by many members in the past, the end of the year showed lots of money and many of these types of projects got funded. There was maybe 6, 7 million dollars, 8 million, we don't even know, as of several years ago, there may have been 10 million dollars. Because of the great work of Mr. Fulmer and his team and Dr. Benson, we don't have that anymore. We don't get to the end of the year and say, "Oh, wow, now what can we fund?" We are running close to 1 and 1/2, maybe 2, not even percent of our budget as we get to the end of the year. There's not a lot of the money sitting there that we can use these. We are projecting about 2 million dollars, that, to be clarified as we move forward. But the ability in the past to be able to buy those buses, to do some of those things at the last minute or at the end of the year, that opportunity has gone away. So I just wanted to share that as we move into discussing item 11.02. Is there a motion regarding this particular agenda item? If not, Mr.?
Madam Chairman, for purposes of discussion, I'll move to approve, but I do have some comments.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Ms. Healy, would you like to start then?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I, I appreciate the approach that we've taken here. I think for the first time that I can recall, there has been a fairly objective look given to the different demands that need to be met here. There's been an attempt made to, I think, unbiasedly, that's probably not a word, but without bias, rank these and apply certain criteria that, you know, would, would show what was the most dire needs for the school system. And I'm, I'm not going to question these priorities because they were done by a committee and there was criteria set forth, and I know Dr. Benson was very much involved in overseeing it. I do have a, a request, though. I absolutely want to repair the track at Colonial Forge High School. I think that's a requirement. I wish we could do it this summer, but my understanding from, and Mr. Hirin, if this is not correct, please, you know, let me know, but my understanding from the last meeting was that if that had not been awarded by April 21st, which I think predated the, the last meeting, then that can't be done this summer, that that work cannot be done until a year from this summer. Is, is that correct, Mr. Hirin? You're shaking your head, yes. All right. For that, for that reason, what I would ask the board to consider is to, putting some money aside, perhaps about 200,000 dollars or so, as a placeholder to, to begin the funding for this project for for this project for a year from the summer, with the understanding that the balance, you know, would have to be found somewhere between now and a year from April, which is when I assume the contract would have to be awarded, and move down the list to take care of some of these other items with the money that is available this year. And that would be upgrading the 9/11 duress system for all schools at a cost of $150,000, replacing the generator at Hartwood Elementary School for $100,000, upgrading the drop, library at Drew Middle School for $75,000, which, even if we don't do anything else, I think that needs to be done, and we need to keep these, this parity for, for our schools. And then replacing interior exterior doors at North Stafford High School for $100,000. We've all talked about North Stafford and, you know, really taken a hard look at, you know, what needs to be done there, you know, do it sooner rather than later. And finally, and I've talked about this before, installing a modular classroom at AG Wright Middle School, and that would be for the Coral Program. We heard a lot about the Coral Program this evening and the accomplishments, and that's something that AG Wright has requested for several years now, is to have that modular classroom for its Coral Program. So if we did, you know, those five projects at a cost of, about $550,000 or so, we could, based on the anticipated revenues, accomplish all of that and still put together, put aside, maybe that would just leave us 150 towards a track. As I said, I want that track done, it has to be done, that's a safety measure, but we can't do any, we can't do it this year, anyway. So we can put the money in the bank and hold it there, or we can do some of these other projects that, you know, are very critical. I, I don't know how hard it's going to go without replacing the generator, if that generator breaks, we're going to have to do something there, but it's something I'd like, you know, I'd like to be considered. My first choice would have been just to go with Forge and get it done, have it done this summer, but that's not an option. So, I think we need to look at what's in the, you know, what's in the best interest of the school system, now this does assume that we're going to find the funding for next year, but I don't think it's an unrealistic assumption to have, if we make that our number one, you know, priority here for funding. Thank you.
Madam Chair, while, while we're talking about the, the bottom portion, and I appreciate you, Trish, expanding on, on what we needed a modular classroom for, but we, we just did a redistricting, is there no other place in the, in the school that we can put the Coral Program?
AG Wright is the, pretty, pretty, aren't they the highest capacity, the highest percentage middle school? I mean, what are they, 97, 98? What, does anybody have that percentage? I mean, it is amazing how their capacity is compared to all the other middle schools.
They also share space with the elementary schoo-, I mean, it's, it's a unique design of, of AG Wright, because it's almost two schools put together, so there's not a lot of extra space.
Thanks.
Do we have a percentage, Dr. Benson, in the, the percentage of capacity versus enrollment? I'm pretty sure that AG Wright is going to be the highest percentage of all the middle schools.
I believe it is.
See some head shaking.
I just, we have to check the number, but it is, yeah.
And, and it's been a closed school for several years now.
You know how I feel about modular, once we bring modular classrooms in, we start, start setting a precedent, and I, and I, when I see modular classrooms, I get a little bit nervous, so that's why I'm asking.
And I, I agree, and actually, if, if the principal weren't specifically requesting this, I'm not sure I would be here advocating for it, but, but this is something the principal has asked for, for several years now.
Is there any other comment before, because I will make comment as well, but, oh, Mr. McCosker?
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Hiran, and...
We'll send you to that diversity dreamy, Mr. Hiran.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank, thanks, Mr. Hiran. So, you know, as I've mentioned, and many board members have been fighting for their schools to make sure that they get their track upgraded and they get several different items, but, once again, you know, I, I, I ask about Ferry Farm Elementary School. Are there the oldest school, or the second oldest school out of our 17 elementary schools that has not been with a recent renovation or new? So there's two elementary schools, Hartwood and Ferry Farm. Is there nothing that Ferry Farm Elementary School needs?
No, they do, they have many needs.
They have many needs, okay.
Now, as you well know, we've deferred many of those needs with the idea that we are going to have a rebuild. So, based on some of the indications that, that may change or may be delayed, we in, we accelerated our facility assessment, upgraded those for not only Ferry Farm, but Drew, as well as Hartwood.
Right.
So the results of that will help us capture some of those critical building systems and some of the ancillary, other support items that need to be upgraded, and we'll have an opportunity to integrate those into our infrastructure plan, starting next year.
For next year, at least.
Yes, sir, so next summer, this time next year, I would dare to say that you'll see some probably projects. This, the same thing happened to us with Gary Melcher's complex.
Right.
There was a period of time where we deferred any funding for that, for thoughts.
Very old facility.
And so you'll see, in our infrastructure list, you'll see some of the Gary Melchers things starting to pop up, roof, design for the pavement, so they do come, and I apologize that it won't come faster, but it certainly, I can assure you that it will come.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, I, I'm not finished, though, so, but Les, do you have a question directly for him? I'm not finished talking, though.
No, when you finish.
Okay, okay, thanks. No, I'm done with you.
Thank you.
So, so anyway, you know, I, I'm not going to be supporting the FY17 list, and I do appreciate the, the list, and I do appreciate the measuring criteria by which the list was generally made. However, you know, as I mentioned to the board and the superintendent on several occasions, I am concerned about our oldest schools, which I'm glad we're, for, at least for next year, we'll have a, a good look at Ferry Farm Elementary School and hopefully Hartwood and Drew. But Ferry Farm Elementary School right now is not represented on this list, and as everyone knows, Ferry Farm Elementary School was pulled off the capital improvement plan, the build list, two years prior to the start of a full rebuild, as, a much-needed rebuild, and it was, again, by Mr. Hiran, and I appreciate that comment about, there were many things that were pushed off due to this rebuild. You know, we have 17 elementary schools in our school division, and two of them, Hartwood and Ferry Farm, have not gone under a recent renovation or, or, or are a new school, of course, and, you know, that affects the quality of education for our southern school students. You know, because Ferry Farm has been on this rebuild list, naturally, once again, upgrades have been pushed off, so I am concerned that, you know, I'm a little bit angry that, although it's a good idea to go to this new and improved list, so we rebuild, or we, we build, we renovate 15 elementary schools, and then the last two elementary schools that are, oh, by the way, they're most, the most southern elementary schools in the county, oh, guess what, there's a new, there's a new game changer. Now we're going to go through this, this whole little walk list before we rebuild you or renovate you, you may get rebuilt, you may not, the Board of Supervisors will have a little bit of say in that, too, and so I'm a little bit angry about that. I'm a little bit angry about how our board, you know, we talk about equity, what, where's the equity for the, the students in Drew, Hartwood, and Ferry Farm? But I'm, I'm concerned, as the, as the, as the board member for the George Washington District, I'm concerned about the, the George Washington District, District kids, the equity there. As we talk about rebuilding our tracks and everything else, well, we pulled that school very quickly, Ferry Farm, off the rebuild list, this board did, and then the FY18 list comes out right here, the FY17 list comes out two and a half months ago, or two months ago, with absolutely nothing on it from Ferry Farm. So we pull it off the list as a board, but then we get ready to approve the FY17 list with all the necessary upgrades, but Ferry Farm has none. I'm angry about that. Am I happy about Mr. Hiran and Dr. Benson taking a good look at Ferry Farm next year? Yeah, of course I am. Of course I am. But, you know, Ferry Farm has pushed off this rebuild for years and years due to the, due to other, actually, they, they did it out of the kindness of their heart, because there were more important things in the school division that we needed to accomplish, and I had no problem with that. But then it comes time for the kids of my district to get taken care of, and this board approves a CIP that pushes, pushes off the rebuild for a vote, for a possible rebuild. So I'm not happy about that. Thank you.
I do appreciate, Ms. McCosker made the correction there right at the end, but, so the folks at home do know the Ferry Farm rebuild, as well as I believe the Drew renovation are within the wedge, what we call the wedge, of the CIP that we adopted, and the Board of Supervisors adopted as well. I do appreciate Ms. Healy's goal here, and, and Tammy Hannah will probably write you a very nice thank you note if you get the library into this year at Drew Middle School. It's something that she asked me about continuously, because we are doing some other work there to make the changes, the repairs, the number one item on the list. It'd be helpful, I, I assume, probably do those two projects at the same time while we're in that school and having construction going on at the same time in the summer, so thank you, I, I think that's a good idea.
Ms. Healy, perhaps we could, in light of Mr. McCosker's comments, one of the things that I think we learn about when you have and manage 31 or 32 buildings in this county, something that works today may 60 days later break, or you can come to my house and find that out. In light of that, I would, I, I'm thinking about possibly bringing a, either substitute to say that this board should fund, should go through project number 14, which is on our, our list right now, which takes us down to 2.626207 is, is the approximate cost of that, and knowing that Mr. Hiran, after this summer goes on, things break, things fall apart, things look differently come September, potentially, that this list is going to be in flux, is that correct somewhat? I mean, as the year goes on?
Yes, ma'am, after this summer, we'll take the remaining projects and any new requirements as developed during our call letter, gathering those new requirements, which will more than likely include Falmouth and, I mean, I'm sorry, Ferry Farm.
Hartwood.
And we'll rack and stack, we'll apply the criteria again in the fall and go through, so the remaining projects may not stay in that particular priority, there'll be others that will be interjected, and it'll be racked based on that criteria, and so they may score differently, and in fact, I'm, I'm almost sure they will score differently.
So my comment would be, is let's, as a board, go through number 14. I agree with Ms. Healy, perhaps we should put the, that we should put the Colonial Forge Track in the number 14 position, so that we can fund those projects that were just listed. The remaining funds that we have, as we continue forward, we can decide as a board how much should be reserved in that Colonial Forge Track, since that has been moved out of the way for other tracks. They cannot now hold any track meets there, because it is not usable, but we cannot build it this summer. So for those who are Colonial Forge athletes, this is not a project that we do not want to fund, we cannot, we cannot do it this summer, so we do want to use these funds and not have them, not used for other immediate needs. However, agreeing and talking with Ms., you know, hearing Mr. McCosker, and also some of the good work being done on some facilities analysis, I am not comfortable going much farther than number 14 tonight, moving forward, because we may come to the summer and have a whole different list of projects, and as we would be potentially funding those projects as funds became available, I would want to have a restacked list when we start to do that. So that would, I guess my suggestion would be, I guess I'm saying, a substitute that the board would fund, will allow the superintendent to fund up to project number 14 on the capital improvements list, or whatever we're calling it, moving the Colonial Forge Track to the 14 position, and remaining funds would go into that account, and as we get through June, we will reexamine how to potentially earmark those funds going forward, so they are not lost for next year. I have no idea if that's going to make exactly a motion, I'm sorry, Ms. Healy. Does that make some sense? Do you all understand, board members?
Is, is what you're suggesting, that we move number eight, which is the repair the track of Colonial Forge High School, and, Mr. McCosker, this is not an enhancement or an upgrade, this is actually a repair that is necessary.
We can't hold track meets there.
As Ms. Hazard said, we, we can't even have track meets there. I don't, I don't see anything that is extra here. I, I think these are all absolute, you know, must-dos and must-haves on this list.
But, that we may need reanalysis or...
But, I, I think, given, given where we are on that track, I expect that to be near the top of the list next year. We have a school that we can't hold track meets because of the condition of the track, you know, that, to me, is unacceptable, you know, for this county. So I would expect that to be, if not number one, certainly up, up on the top of that, and I would expect that also, you know, to come to us well in advance of the time when it has to be approved. And I understand what happened this year, we weren't in a position, you know, to make that decision, but it's, it's, you know, it's the school community that's going to suffer because of that, and I, I certainly would want that to, you know, be addressed very early on next year. Madam Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker, I, I will challenge you to bring some requests to this board that, that would help out at Ferry Farms, because I'm not aware that we have not addressed needs in any of our schools, whether they're new schools or old schools. So, that, that, that's a personal challenge. You, you bring it, bring it on, and we'll see what we can do. I can tell you, Moncur, for years, has not had things particularly done, because we were anticipating the rebuild, and fortunately, we're, you know, we, we have that to look forward to in a few years, but, you know, this, this is not a singling out of Ferry Farms, but if there are things that are needed there, bring it on, you know, let us know. I'm sure that Mr. Hiran is, you know, in touch with the principal there.
And no, I just, that's a good point, and then, you know, also with the track issue, though, how many years was Stafford County, how many were, but that was, that was a few years, we couldn't hold meets either.
Well, you don't want to, you don't want to ask me about that one, because when we approved Stafford High School rebuilt, that was a choice for this school board, and this school board could have chosen to add the money in, to have the larger track, so that they could have it there, and it was the will of the representatives, this was before your time, from the southern districts, to put the money into other enhancements in the school, rather than putting the money into the track. So in effect, that decision was made by this board at the request of the representatives, you know, whose students were going to Stafford High School. Then, a few years later, after that money was all gone, the requests came in, so they actually ended up, you know, having it the best of both worlds and getting it done. But, but that was a decision that was purposefully made at the request of the representatives, because there were other things that, that they saw as more important to the school community. So that wasn't ignored, it was a financial decision. The money was there when we, you know, were rebuilding the school, but the choice was to spend it somewhere else.
I can't speak for the other, for boards prior, but, you know, it's still, just like you said, it's still, you know, as a board member, it's, it's, that's not, that's, that's not right. You're right, you shouldn't, we shouldn't have a high school that can't do a track meet and have a track team at it, right? I mean, that's what you just said, I agree with you 100%, but it's not like it's never happened.
All right, any other comments, and I believe I tried to do a substitute.
I'll, I'll accept that.
Friendly amendment, or however you want to do it.
I made the motion right. I'll accept that amendment. And basically, the amendment is that the repair of the track at Colonial Forge slide down to number fourteen and then nine through current fourteen move up. Is that correct?
And we would go as far as number fourteen, knowing that in the fall, we may have additional changes to that after we go through the summer. All right. Is everyone clear on what we're voting on this one? You were the secondor, I believe. Okay. All right. And the secondor agrees. All right. All those in favor of approving, let's see, the year-end infrastructure funding as set forth in the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay. Madam Chair, request to poll the board.
Madam Clerk, can you poll the board, please?
Mr. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Decatur?
Yes.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Hyren?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
No.
Madam Chair, mad, a motion passes by a vote of six to one.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to eleven point oh three regarding new policy thirty-six twelve around, related to standardized test results. Is there a motion?
Move to approve eleven oh three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion about, or any discussion about this item? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our information items. Let's start with twelve point oh one. Approve the Virginia Preschool Initiative grant request to serve an additional eighteen VPI students in twenty seventeen and eighteen. I am sure Ms. Massey is here if anyone has any questions.
I do. Yes. Where are we putting them?
Hi. We have, first off, this is not additional money. Since we've been talking budget, this is already in the budget. So we're not asking for additional money. We're just asking for approval so the superintendent can sign the application. The additional classroom, we have identified a room at the Meltress Complex right now that is being used to store testing materials. The room is only half full of those testing materials, and so we need classroom space as opposed to storage space. There are closets at the complex that we could use to store those materials.
Okay, great. Thanks. Yes.
How are the students identified who would be eligible for this program?
The Virginia Preschool Initiative has criteria that include homeless, that include not graduating from high school, one of the parents not graduating from high school, and then a hundred and thirty percent income eligible by the federal poverty guidelines. And then up to two hundred percent income eligible is another category. And then above that, up to three hundred and fifty percent if they have an IEP.
Thank you. I believe if the board notes in the notes for this, in order to have a timely application for this, there has been a request, I believe, to move this to action if there is not any...
Madam Chair, I move to move this agenda item to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be voting on a motion to move to action, item twelve point oh one. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve twelve point oh one.
Hold on. Let me, let me get, we're getting there.
You've been gone so long.
That's right. We've got to vote first. That's what I'm, why I'm...
Looking forward to going home, I guess.
Double header. That's right.
So all those, all those in favor of moving twelve point oh one to action, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Madam Clerk, can you poll the board, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Decatur?
Yes.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Hyren?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Nope.
Madam Chair, motion passed six to one.
Madam Chair, I'm motion to approve twelve point oh one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Any discussion, I want to point out, this is VPI, right?
Yes.
The preschool initiative. How many years has VPI been a part of Stafford County Public Schools? It was adopted by the state in the early two thousands?
It was oh six. It was adopted at the state, is what I remember.
Yeah. I don't have that statistic for you right now.
I just wanted to point out, you know, this is one of the good things that we do and necessary education items, but it is a mandate by the state essentially. And so it is a cost, you know, there is a local cost to this program. It's, it's one of those things that's in our budget. It is budgeted, but it's something that's required by the state for us to do. And it's, it's hard to argue against. It's a good thing, and Ms. Massey does an absolutely wonderful job.
Well, thank you. This, by, this grant, by adding eighteen more students, you will be pulling down some state money. Again, there is that local match piece, but you will be pulling down state money that's been sitting on the table that we haven't been able to pull down before, and there's still a large amount that sits up there that we can't...
It works kind of like textbooks. We have to spend money to get money.
Exactly.
Kind of like Vegas.
Sometimes you don't get your money from Vegas, though.
That was good. Yeah, yeah, let's...
Madam Chair, so, the reason I'm not going to vote in favor of this is because we still have a local match out of our county funds for this. Isn't that correct?
It's already in the budget that you just approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to be supporting this because...
You don't have a choice not to pay the local match?
No, we don't have a choice not to, not to have the VPI.
This is...
Yes.
It's a mandate by the state, correct?
This is, this is adding eighteen stu, here's, here's why I'm voting no to this. It's not because it's not a wonderful program. The way I understood the agenda item was that we are adding eighteen more students to the VPI program in a cost of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars out of our money. That wasn't the budget that I did not approve, but that was the same reason why adding programs and while not paying your teachers, even though they're worthwhile programs, adding more personnel to this wonderful program is just not the thing to do for me in this budget cycle, so...
Right, I understand that, but I guess my question is, isn't this a state mandate that we have to take on this, where you take in eighteen more students?
No.
No.
It is not.
No. No, it's not. The VPI program...
The Virginia Preschool Initiative is just like he was talking about text money, textbook money. The money is there. It's allotted to our school system, but if we don't draw it down, we don't get it.
So that there are children identified already?
Yes. Yes. Yes, we have a waiting list.
We have a waiting list.
They have a one, they have a waiting list.
And the other thing that I presented when I did the Head Start presentation was that this VPI Head Start is run as one program, and that program does save funding for the school system. When you look at our children, don't need remedial reading, they don't need ELL services that they would need if they didn't come into this program.
Okay. So I guess, I guess my next question would be, so if this is a, here, it's another grant that's out there, and if we're adding the additional eighteen students, is this a continuing grant, or is this something that's going to expire and we're going to end up...
It does not expire.
Okay. Thank you.
You have to reapply every year.
Yes.
You have to reapply every year for it. Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Healy.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to support this because I recall, and I know I've probably said this a hundred times, but I recall meeting years and years and years ago with all our elementary school principals when we used to have round tables. And the one thing that they said would help them more than anything else that we could give them as a school board is to get more students in the Head Start. Now, I know this isn't Head Start, but it's pre-Head Start. So I think any services we can provide to these students is going to help the students, it's going to help their families, and ultimately, if they stay in our school system, it's going to help, you know, our elementary schools, because they will be so much better prepared as they come in. And that helps the teachers in not having to take time away to get these kids up on track, because we all know our Head Start kids are beyond a lot of the other students coming in. So I think, you know, it is extra money that we're spending, but I think it's a good bang for the buck here, and it's going to help those families. And that's what we're, we're here to serve, in the students.
And the VPI program is run as Head Start. It's, you can't tell which child is which by the services they receive. It's just who gets the funding.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to echo that and remind everyone that we went there, and we served them dinner, and we met the families, and we saw the students, and we were told of the waiting list that you have. We know what a wonderful program it is and what great things you do, not only for the students, and like Ms. Healy just said, not only is it a great bang for the buck, that they're not needing that remedial service when they, you know, get into, you know, kindergarten and moving forward, but additionally, you're offering, and I'm just saying that to remind anyone here that is listening, that you're also offering programs for the parents. That evening, you were doing a budgeting class. Not only is it worthwhile, but I don't think it's, it's even worth talking about budget-wise. This is such an amazing program for our entire community that's doing so much good outside of, anyways, you get the point. Thanks so much for everything you do.
As, as you know, serving on the Head Start Policy Council gives you a lot of great insight, and I appreciate Ms. Decatur bringing up our wonderful evening at Head Start this, this year, which I hope the board will do again in our next fiscal year. I do believe we have to look certainly at space and other things, and I think that now that we as a board are exploring alternative ways to look at space so that we can free up other spaces to accommodate the needs of all of our kids so that we remain the great school system that we are, that we need to look at this. I think the board has taken some actions to look at freeing up space, to use our spaces more effectively, and I'm excited that we're moving in that direction. Therefore, I will be supporting this item moving forward. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Decatur?
Yes.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy? Yes.
Mr. Hyren?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker? No.
Madam Chair, motion passes by a vote of six to one.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Massey. Moving on to twelve point oh two, this is information regarding the Brentsmill Two subdivision as a non-transportation walking zone for Shirley Heim Middle School. I believe this is probably Mr. Haran. So are there any questions? Although I think there was a, Ms. Egan?
I, I have a quick question. Like the issue that came up with Stafford Middle School with no sidewalks. Do we have the same situation at Brentsmill Two getting to Shirley Heim than we do at Stafford Middle?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. The attachment shows it's not all of Brentsmill Two. It's just a small portion that's directly behind Shirley Heim Middle School. And we recently, we have a path on Shirley Heim that goes snakes all the way back around the softball field to the edge of the property. We connected that path several weeks ago to, to the sidewalk system in Brentsmill Two in anticipation for this walking zone. So now there's a, there's an established sidewalk there, and so there's sidewalks through Brentsmill Development, and so, so, yes.
So can, so the folks at Brentsmill One are also...
They can walk if they want, but if you, if you know Brentsmill, and I know you do, it's all the way down on Telegraph, all the way up. It's pretty long. So it's only the back end that we're, that we're proposing. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I have a question as well. How do you ensure when you're in walking zones that the students are taking the path that you just said that they should be taking? And I ask because this is my district, and I'm aware of where Brentsmill is and where Shirley Heim is, and if they don't take that path that you just described, it's a deadly route along the Telegraph Road.
Well, there's no way, there's no way to walk unless you go that. And again, we unpurposely just identified that tail end portion of Brentsmill Two because we knew that it was a lengthy development. And we'll certainly, I know the school, I know the school administration there will make sure the students that have been identi, you know, that those homes and any students they have identified in that area, they'll be educated and say, this is your walking zone, and this is how you walk to school. And in many schools, I know, especially at elementary school, the staff will identify teachers to stand, you know, there receiving those students, especially at elementary school. They know who's walking, and they receive those students at the edge of the property and then bring them into the school. It's a little more independent at the middle school level. Those students walk on their own for the most part. But again, I don't believe we're talking a large amount of students that we are targeting here. So, but there's only one way, to walk.
And Ms. Decatur, that was a really good question, and you don't even have any teenagers yet. So you're ready. You're ready.
It's easier, it's easier sometimes with the little kids.
She's in high school.
But I do have a two-year-old.
That's right. Well, sometimes. Well, and I would like to say, I'd like to also point out, it appears, I really appreciate the communication plan. It talked about that there were community meetings proposed, that there was Blackboard Connect sent to the parents that were impacted, and although people didn't, it appears none attended, but at least we were trying to get out that word to, to the community regarding this, and so I appreciate that work.
Yes, ma'am. In the second meeting, we, we were a little deficient on the first meeting, but the second meeting, we targeted also the elementary school, knowing that there's those students, those parents would be interested, you know, as their kids rise to the middle school level, so...
And when does this start? I'm sorry.
It will start at the seventeen, eighteen school year, so in September.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Probably stay in the area just in case. The next two, twelve oh three, Liberty Knolls and Liberty Knolls West subdivisions as for a walking zone to Colonial Forge. Actually, I guess we'll start with that one. Are there any questions about this particular walking area or proposed walking?
I can't believe Mr. Haran's so lucky. Nobody's coming to these meetings. Remember that one we had at Garrisonville?
I do.
Whoa.
There, I will go there.
And of course, I heard about the transportation zone at the meeting. I went to the meeting to find out what staff was proposing. So things have changed, people, and they've changed for the better.
We still might bring a, one that may be a little...
Don't you dare. No, no, no sidewalks. Talk about dangerous. Try going down Chop Tank.
Yes, ma'am. No, I'm not saying Garrisonville.
Thank you.
We were working with another subdivision to bring something in June that it's a little tougher, and we're working with the community right now, so...
Speaking of danger, we are on the Liberty Knolls Zone, right?
Yeah, Liberty Knolls, twelve oh three, yes.
Can you just kind of briefly summarize the safety precautions, and it's sort of written up here, for getting across Courthouse Road? I just want to make sure we get something...
Same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I know. I'd like to make sure, because Courthouse Road is also expecting a significant amount of construction.
Yes, and we certainly don't take this lightly. I know that in many walking zones, crossing any, any street that has significant traffic is, is something that the school board is, staff is concerned as well as school board. So we have a traffic signal being installed as part of the road widening project there on six thirty in front of Colonial Forge. This is the east entrance of Colonial Forge, where the entrance of Liberty Knolls is adjacent to our entrance. So there'll be a traffic signal installed with pedestrian controls, and so operationally, we're recommending that we don't, this not go into effect until that signal is installed operational, and we've worked with VDOT to make sure that our folks that are doing some traffic control on the Colonial Forge side are very familiar and comfortable with operating the, in conjunction with the traffic signal. So we do have students walking now, you know, and the way they get across the street is we have a gentleman, a staff member that works to control traffic, ingressing and egressing that entrance in the mornings and the afternoons, and that particular person assists any pedestrian, any students that are walking to Liberty Knolls. So, and Liberty Knolls Two, which is just turning dirt right now, and Liberty Knolls will both be connected internally as well as with a sidewalk system along six thirty when it's widened. widened. So there'll be two actual pedestrian connectivity points that will merge those two neighborhoods together. So there'll be access internally, off of Courthouse Road, to bring it to the entrance there at the signal, and then they would cross.
Thank you. Thanks for putting it out. I, I just want to make sure, we're talking about that as often as possible, because as a parent, that would be my number one concern going across Courthouse Road. So that's all I was asking for, is just make sure we, we talk about it.
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving on to, as we continue with Liberty Knowles and Liberty Knowles West, regarding a walking zone to Winding Creek Elementary School as well.
So this particular one involves Winding Creek, much different. And if you noticed, we, we do not recommend we implement this for Liberty Knowles 2, which is adjacent to Winding Creek, until the path is built, which is supposed to be built this summer, but we can't control the contractor's timeline. And interconnectivity to Liberty Knowles is made, and that may take a little while. So my, my guess is, we wouldn't want to implement this in the 17, 18 school year. But I wanted to bring it to the board for your consideration, now that not only is Liberty Knowles about 60 to 70 percent built out, but Liberty Knowles 2 is, is dirt right now. And so under the same vein that we've been looking at new developments, we wanted to bring these to the board to give you an opportunity to make those decisions now. You can choose to, you know, put them off and wait until those things. But staff would not want to implement this until we had that interconnectivity, so that any students could get to Winding Creek without coming out on 630.
Ms. Healy?
How far would be the longest walk? Say, say if you lived at Liberty Knowles, drive up towards Colonial Forge High School.
Well, I know that our...
Could we track that?
I can provide that to you, but I know that our regs do not allow us to go any more than a mile.
Well, I know, but I also don't like a mile for little...
That's right. Yes, ma'am.
Bitty ones.
That's right. And so I'll have that for you. I'll provide that in.
Okay. Thank you. I think something I just wanted to make a general comment, something I know we heard a lot about in redistricting, was how can, how, the school board getting ahead on things, that, you know, if we want to change schools for new subdivisions, things like this, I would assume if, if many people look for certain types of subdivisions, and being able